I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amy, can you take roll call, please?
Mr. Gilbert?
Here.
Mr. Detsel?
Here.
Mrs. Detsel?
Here.
Mr. Keatsworth?
Here.
Mr. Yosomara?
Here.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, first, the agenda items, legislative updates.
So, the General Assembly has sent Senate Bill 1 to Governor Dewine for his approval. This is a financial literacy bill that would require students who enter the ninth grade for the first time after July 1, 2022, to complete at least one-half unit of instruction in the study of financial literacy in either an elective course or in lieu of one-half unit of a mathematics course. Mathematics course cannot be Algebra II or its equivalent. And additionally, Senate Bill 1 also would provide flexibility to school districts regarding the educational requirements of substitute teachers for the 21, 22 school year. That's all I have.
That's all? Okay, thank you, Matt. Okay, next is student achievement liaison report.
Yes, we'd like to, and it's a big congratulations to Howa Sau, the Colrain High School senior, who was recently selected as Student of the Year by the Northwest Exchange Club. Howa was selected as the NEC Student of the Month for Colrain High School in 2021. She was later selected amongst other school winners as the Student of the Year. She is very active in her school and has participated in a number of activities. She's a member of the Colrain High School Show Cards and has even been an active participant in the Northwest Local School District's Facility Master Plan. Howa was also a recipient of the 2021 Encourage a Young Writer Creativity Award. Like to have a big congratulations to Howa. Next, Northwest District, we'd like to congratulate Elijah Thacker, Colrain High School senior, who is named, has been named, a commended student in the 2022 National Merit Scholarship Program. Thacker is one of 34,000 commended students throughout the nation being recognized for their exceptional academic promise. Students who were named National Merit Commended Scholars placed among the top 50,000 students who entered the competition by taking the 2022 preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship qualifying test. A big congratulations to Elijah as well. That's it.
That's it? Thank you, Matt. Butler Tech updates?
Yeah, just one thing. Went up to Columbus last Tuesday and called on a few of the representatives from Hamilton County and Butler County and Senator Blessing and just went and thanked them for putting through for Career Tech, taking us off the cap, which all that will do is give us more money so we can have more programming for kids in Butler Tech and, you know, the surrounding school districts. So, we just went up there just for the day and just thanked them for giving that bill passed, which helps a lot with more programming for Butler Tech.
Great.
And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, next agenda item is any reports from any employee organizations?
Yeah, we have Brenda Bright, who is going to speak on behalf of OCSE, which is our Transportation Association. Brenda is the Vice President of the Association.
No, I'm not anymore.
Oh.
I'm grievance chair. I was former Vice President. Some of you may or may not know, but our president is out of commission right now, and that's Tracy Keller. And if you've been here any length of time, you have met Tracy and myself some time or another. So, she wanted to be here tonight, but it was not possible. So, she gave me instructions, and I am to read her words. So, these are Tracy's words. She's President of OCSE 230. These are some of the people we represent in the Transportation Department. I would like to share my and others' concerns that we have in the Transportation Department. Our department is sinking and sinking fast, so fast it may never recover. Morale is at an all-time low, and many people are at their breaking point. Our people have concerns that you need to hear. We started off this school year with three open routes. Not enough drivers, and we still don't have enough bus aides. Drivers are doubling up or double-running, and our special needs drivers are transporting children with no bus assistance. We are down to two mechanics. When I first started here in the department, we had five mechanics. Our four supervisors are driving mornings and afternoons almost every single day. This week, there has been one or a couple that have been able to be in the office at various times. But, you know, they're putting in 60, 70 hours a week. Plus, if they're behind the wheel of the bus, they're trying to answer drivers' questions and do office work behind that wheel of the bus. We all know that's not safe for them or the children or the other drivers out there who are panicked over them doing this. They need to be in our office. I will tell you, they, this is my words, they are doing an awesome job, and our department probably would have had to close down if we'd had any other supervisors in there but the four we have. This is the first time in the 35 years that I've worked here that the four supervisors in that office hold a CDL. So, if it wasn't for that, we would really be hurting. We all know that to drive a bus, you need to be on the top of your game every single day. With the hours that they're putting in, if you take that and figure it out hourly, what they're doing, they would be making 10 something an hour. That's pitiful. It's shameful for what they do. No one wants to be a school bus driver or a bus assistant anymore. We're a dying breed. There are so many other employment opportunities in today's world, why would anyone choose these jobs in a school district? We work split shifts. We're responsible for transporting children, known as our precious cargo, and in one second, we can be a nobody, and in a split second, we can be all over the national news or the world news. We get no backing from administrators when we have discipline issues on the bus, and it takes us 11 hours to work an eight-hour day. That's why no one wants to be a bus driver. We can go to work at Amazon and many other places and earn about the same amount of money with a straight hour, eight-hour shift, and not have the responsibilities or the aggravation that our people carry on them now. Employees are also concerned for their own well-being and health during these trying times. Buses are being cram-packed. The majority of the disinfectant sprayers that were purchased last year to disinfect our buses are no longer working. Our team brought this concern up to the administration team on September 27, and we're still waiting for answers. The majority of the buses are not being disinfected. Yes, there are wipes, but a lot of drivers do not have enough time in between their schools to physically wipe down 24 seats. Buses are breaking down. Spare buses are hard to find. Our buses lack repairs and servicing since we are down to two mechanics, and one of those mechanics is usually driving. Mechanics should not be driving on a daily basis and foregoing the job that they were hired to do. We are now sending out buses for repairs and service at $125 an hour. We can't pay our mechanics the going rate for a diesel mechanic, but we can send out to-be serviced doing their job for $125 an hour or more. I hope you take note of that. If the administration team is looking for top qualified people at entry-level pay, something has to give. You're not going to get someone to come here and work and be a diesel mechanic for no $21 an hour. Our people do not feel valued. This was obvious in negotiations when the administration team refused to grant additional pay steps to senior employees in our department. We're stagnant, and there are about 10 of us in our department right now that could retire. I'm one of them. What would happen if all of us retired tomorrow or this year? And just a side note, I live closer to seven other school districts than I do this one. Two of them, I could throw a rock and about hit their bus lot. But I have been loyal to this district for 35 years, and right now, I don't feel like they're being loyal to us and our department. Up until last year, we had part-time employees that were hired by Northwest, paid by Northwest, and guaranteed hours by Northwest that worked through COVID and held our department together. We call them part-time employees, but the administration team calls them subs. How can a person be a sub when Northwest hires you, Northwest pays you, and Northwest guarantees you hours, and you are told to report every single day? The only difference between a part-time employee and a contracted employee in our department is that the part-time employee is not contracted to a bus, but they work every day. And we feel that they are owed that compensation, which I know is on the agenda tonight, and we do thank that and want you to consider that. We don't have the luxury of any part-time employees this year. Every single one of them got contracted to a bus. Even though they worked through COVID on a daily basis last year, they were denied the stipend, but hopefully that will be rectified tonight. Currently, what we have learned through an email and no face-to-face discussions is that routes are going to be canceled, and the driver of the canceled route is to jump on another route for the day. First and foremost, our drivers did not sign up for this. Drivers and bus assistants pick their routes by seniority every year. We know the children that we drive daily. We know their stops. We know if they cross the street or not. We know if someone is to meet them at the bus stop and so on. By doing this, they are making the people who come to work every day and are pulling this department through, ticking off a lot of people. And we have talked to some and tried to encourage them and get them to stay. I don't know what's going to happen. We can't afford to lose any of the employees in our department. And just a side note here, a former supervisor that we had, I know for fact has been calling some drivers and trying to lure them to the district he is now working for with a sign-on bonus. Route sheets can't even be fixed properly because there's no time for our supervisors to adjust them or to learn the new program that the district has spent thousands on because they are driving every day. I asked the board members to help stop this ship from sinking. I implore you to instruct the administration team to review their hiring practices, to guarantee hours for drivers and bus assistants, to raise wages, to advertise often on every social media site and the Northwest website, and to consider bonuses to compete with other districts and private companies to retain the loyal employees that have served this district and to attract others to come to Northwest Transportation before this ship sinks. Please, help us. Thank you for your time.
Are there any other employee organizations that would like to speak?
That brings us to community comments. Before we get started, I'll read. The Northwest Board of Education welcomes the opportunity to listen to Northwest Local School District residents' comments, suggestions, and concerns on educational issues. It is important to remember that the Board conducts meetings in public, but the meetings are not a public forum. The intent of the meeting is to allow the Board to complete needed business. Northwest Board of Education meetings are conducted using Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised version. Most matters which fall under jurisdiction of the Board may be addressed during the Community Comments section in the Order of Business. The Board will not discuss negotiations of personnel in an open session. Any concerns and comments about individuals ought to be brought to the attention of the administration. A school district cannot discuss personal student information whether or not discipline was imposed on a student nor the reason for the decision because disclosure would be a violation of state and federal law. The following guidelines will be used for public commentary at Board meetings. Individuals wishing to address the Board must complete and submit a request to speak form to the Board President prior to the beginning of the meeting. Individuals will preface their comment by an announcement of their name, address, group affiliation, if that's applicable. Each person will be given three minutes to speak on agenda items of any topic during the Community Comments section. Public commentary is confined to that portion of our agenda. Individuals will be recognized to speak once on a given topic. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No person may individually address or question board members, district administration, or members of the public in attendance. No response to the speaker will occur from board members, district administration, or members of the public in attendance during this time. Appropriate follow-up by district administration may occur at a later time if so warranted. No more than 15 total minutes will be devoted to public participation unless the Board votes unanimously to continue the discussion. Repetitive statements may be ruled out of order by the presiding officer, and the presiding officer has the right to terminate the participation of any individual or individuals if the person violates the rules of good order. Laws of the State of Ohio determine the powers and duties of the Board of Education, the Superintendent, and the CFO treasurer. Tonight, we have three requests to speak, and first up is Gwen Westrock.
Hi. My name is Gwen Westrock. I'm a parent here at Colrain High School. I want to start by saying that I personally no longer am able to use the bus service, but for the years that I did, you guys are such blessings to the district. I hope that they take you guys seriously, and I hope that they give you exactly what you guys deserve. So, thank you. Also, in light of our changes in government, I would like to start off by saying that I am not a domestic terrorist. I'm simply a concerned parent, and that's why I'm here tonight to speak. I'm going to read something that my fellow friend and district parent, Stacy DeAngelo had written. She's unable to be here tonight because she's rooting on her son as he plays freshman football. Tonight, again, we are asking the Board to unmask our kids. There's been no movement or adjustments made by the Superintendent or board members about mask usage or the tiered response system. We're not backing down. As the parents and guardians of these children, we should have the freedom to say what goes, if it does or doesn't go on our, in our, in our kids. We do not agree with these rights being taken from us. Stacy spoke with the Oak Hills Communications Director this week. As they also are following the Hamilton County Department of Health guidelines, their district has a very simple but effective plan. Masks are optional, but highly recommended, and if the numbers in a class, wing, or individual school go up, then they will implement mandatory masking for a few days in that specific area or school. The parents in that district have been very pleased with their plan, and the numbers of student COVID positive rates of .20% are very comparable to our rate of .23%. They do have a 1.61% less quarantine rate for their students this week, but does this small percentage difference merit taking the rights of parents away and subjecting the students to seven hours of mask-wearing per day? I don't think so. The numbers are trending down in the county, state, city, and district, and now we have been respectful in trying to go through the correct channels to have our voices heard. Our next step will be to seek legal action. Please help us to avoid this unnecessary step and modify the tiered response system and make masks optional. Adjust the benchmark of the indicators and/or adjust the response system to be similar to what Oak Hills does with their students. That response system has masks optional and only when and if a class, wing, or school trends upward. Make masks mandatory for a few days. Thank you for your service to our kids by hearing our voices and to us parents that are here representing the 60% plus that want a mask to be optional from the very beginning of school. Okay, well, I guess that's all the time I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Gwen. Next is Jen Barrett.
Good evening. My name is Jen Barrett. I have three children in the school district. I'm here again tonight to express my concern for Northwest Local School District mask policy and my disappointment at the lack of appropriate response. On September 1, my husband emailed a notice to respond to each member of the Board, sharing information that only an environmental toxicologist or industrial hygienist is qualified to conduct air quality tests to determine the appropriate PPE necessary. These experts agree that masks and face coverings do not work against viral or bacterial infections. He received no response to his email. On September 14, I wrote to each member of the Board regarding the Ohio Constitution and healthcare system. I outlined how Northwest is breaking the Ohio Constitution, Article 1, Section 21, by implementing a healthcare system through requiring masked devices, participation in contact tracing, and quarantining, quarantining healthy individuals. Northwest is levying penalties by excluding students from in-person learning if they do not comply. Only one board member responded out of five. Thank you, President Mark Gilbert. At the Board meeting on September 27, it was shared that the district's attorney determined Northwest is not breaking the Ohio Constitution. In response, on October 4, my husband emailed the Superintendent regarding the healthcare system inquiry and mask information. He requested written explanation of why Northwest mask mandate, contact tracing, and quarantining of individuals both ill and healthy is not in violation of the Ohio Constitution. He provided a presentation by Steven Petty, an industrial hygienist, which explains why PPE is the least effective form of protection from COVID. Nine days later, still no response. Northwest is using masks to reduce the amount of children that would be quarantined if exposed to COVID positive case based on their interpretation of the Hamilton County Board of Health's school guidance. As I'm sure you are aware, there are many schools within Hamilton County that have honored parents' choice to make masks optional. 60% of parents and faculty voted for masks to be optional this year. When the Superintendent addressed the district to share the safety protocols and six-tiered data points, he stated, "When it gets to a level two, when it gets to three indicators being met, when we get to four indicators being met, when we get to five indicators met, and when we get to six." He never said "if," always "when." It implied that there was never any intention of following the district's preference. And after seven short school days, the district met three indicators, the mask policy was executed, and the preference of the parents was immediately discarded. As I see it, Northwest has options. It could follow the law. It could follow parents' preference. It could follow relevant environmental experts, or could even follow the lead of other mask optional schools, but it does not. You have ignored our emails and requests, and therefore, we will continue to fight for the rights to protect our children from your unlawful and unscientific mask mandate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jen. Next is Emily Mason.
Hello, my name is Emily Mason. I have a junior and a senior here at Colrain High School. I'm here to voice my concerns on mask mandates as well as possible future vaccine mandates. As school board members, I really hope and pray that your number-one priority is our students. From the start of the pandemic, we have trusted the experts and the governments to tell us what to do. However, our kids would have been better off being exposed to this virus early on and develop natural immunity. But we listened to the government, and we locked down. We know masks don't stop the transmission and are most likely harming our kids, but here we are, listening to the government. They're also telling us to take the vaccines. However, if you check the VAERS website, which hopefully you're all very familiar with VAERS, if not, I can educate you on that. It's veersanalysis.info. There are over 15,000 deaths, 700,000 adverse reactions, and over 20,000 people that are permanently disabled because of these vaccines. Technically, VAERS only reports 1% of actual cases, but let's assume that's 100, let's say it's 100%. That's still way too many. I believe when it was Ebola, they shut it off after like 200 deaths. We've had 15,000 deaths, so I really hope if and when I know that, let me just finish. So, are you aware that people that take the vaccine can still get the virus and they can still spread it? And to be very clear, it does not provide immunity. It does not, and it doesn't matter what their symptoms, that they may be less, they're still spreading it. So, I have another question. Why are there different rules for vaxxed people versus unvaxxed, when they can still get it and they can still spread it? There should be no difference on quarantining for vaxxed versus unvaxxed. This virus is not going anywhere. It's just like the flu. If our kids get the vaccine and no longer have natural immunity response to help them fight, fight it, because it's a genetically modified entity, we have no long-term data to know what the future holds for anyone who has gotten this gene therapy. If we continue to listen to the government and make our kids wear masks, force vaccines, what's next? Telling them what jobs they can have, where they can live, how many children they can have? Does this sound familiar? Communism. We are not too far off from these situations and scenarios. It's happening in other countries like Australia right now. With each freedom we're willing to give up, the more they're taking. Our problem is we are all controlled by the government because of the money they give the schools. But when are we going to stand up against the government and do what's right for our kids? Please help us be a voice for our kids. You guys have more power than we do, although really, when we all stand together, we're more powerful than the government if we all decided to unite and stand against the government. I'm actually very thankful Mike Dewine signed the House Bill 244 in law today that says a public school or state institution of higher education shall not require any individual to receive a vaccine that has not been granted full FDA approval. There are no FDA-approved vaccines available in the United States as of today. You don't believe me, call Pfizer yourself, and they will tell you that there are no FDA-approved vaccines in the United States of America, no matter what the big tech and media is trying to tell you. Thank you for your time. Transportation, thank you also, and have a good evening.
Okay, that brings us, thank you, everybody, for your speaking, and thank you, Transportation, for covering your concerns. Next brings us to superintendent consent items. Darryl?
So, tonight on the agenda, we have our personnel items. We have eight resignations, five initial appointments, and 11 change in statuses. We also have three items on there for transportation specifically. One is a resolution to institute a hiring bonus for drivers, aides, and mechanics. So, that would be working forward and starting January 1. So, that would be a hiring bonus. People who employed with the district for 90 days would get the bonus. They would need to stay through the end of the year in order to keep the bonus. But we met with Transportation. We did hear and listen to the concerns they have. This was one of the things they brought that they thought would be a solution, and so that's on the agenda for you to approve tonight. The other piece is the mechanics. We are down mechanics in the department, and they are driving on a daily basis. We have posted and looked for and have not been able to secure mechanics, so this MOU that is on there would allow us to purchase services for mechanics through a vendor. The other one on there is an MOU to have a trip coordinator. We had that in the last contract. With our supervisors driving, that additional support where we institute that for this year again, to have some drivers who help with the routing of trips is necessary. So, we are continuing to work on all the issues that they brought and try to work on solutions for the department. And I'll talk later about the cancellation of routes and things that we're trying to do with that. In addition to that, we have business items. There are vendor contracts for Title I and Special Education Services, as well as donations to Pleasure Middle School from Blackbaud, Corrine Middle School from Melanie Moore at Cincy Book Club, and multiple donations to White Oak through Donors Choose for teachers who have had funded crowdfunding applications on Donors Choose. So with that, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the adoption of the consent items as listed.
Second. I want to ask a question. What, how much money are we putting aside for Transportation to get that bonus? Have we set?
So the bonus is $1,000 for drivers, $800 for van drivers, and $400 for aides. So it depends on how many we hire.
Okay, well, I'll reserve my other questions for later for my comments.
Any other questions? Daryl, the bonuses, uh, how does that compare to surrounding school districts? Is it in line with them? Is it some not offering them? What is, what is that?
A lot of school districts are not offering bonuses. We align this to the ESER stipends that were given last year to try to make it comparable for employees who either were with us in January but not eligible for it or new employees that would be hired this year.
Quick question too, and where are we, um, in relationship to surrounding like districts as far as pay? I know, I know we lost a year and a half already, but a year or two, we did vote to increase that pay, hourly pay to, that put us closer to the top. Are we still there?
It's not the top. Um, we're probably in the top, um, probably third.
Any other questions?
I could answer that.
I'd just like one other quick comment. I will say, um, that everything we're trying to do, this isn't something that is just our district, unfortunately. Um, it is a nationwide problem. Um, we were just, Jen and I were just gone the last five days, and we drove down through Tennessee, North Carolina, South Carolina, and back up through Virginia, West Virginia home. There was not a school district that we went by and we took back roads that didn't have the big signs and needed bus drivers. And I agree with you. I mean, there's, it, yeah, I think it's hard to compete with the Amazon jobs and everything else with what, all the responsibility that you have. So we certainly appreciate all you, all of you out there that are driving every day and the ones that have been here for such a long time. Thank you. Um, we just got to continue to work together to come up with ideas like this because we're competing with every single other school district that is trying to, um, find enough drivers. And same thing, diesel mechanics.
I have one other comment here. When were, were, was anybody on the AO warned about the shortage of bus drivers? Do you know?
Yeah, we've known that there were.
Well, when was that?
We've known for a while that there's been driver shortages.
Give me a month.
It's not a set date that it was a notification.
Let me put it this way. As early as last April, 2021, the AO was warned that we didn't have, they did not have enough bus drivers in Transportation. That should have been the warning to us to not implement this bonus now. It should have been implemented in April so we can get enough bus drivers in our district. It's like putting a Band-Aid on an open gash right now.
I think there's been a shortage way before April. We've been talking about this for the last several years. I have a cousin that was the head of Transportation up in Worcester, Ohio, and he's been dealing with this for the last four or five years. So, um, and I do think when we address all of this as a board and increase the pay, if you remember that, that was a way that we tried to, um, entice drivers to come here versus Oak Hills, Mount Healthy, or any of the other surrounding districts. So I don't think we've sat here and not done anything. We bumped that.
I'm not talking about the board. I'm talking about the AO. When were they warned about this? And I got it straight from a supervisor's mouth that in early April, we were destined to, to be in this situation now.
I mean, there's been, there's been signs up at the Transportation, I mean, that sign needing bus drivers for a couple of years. I mean, I think, and you go by every school district and every single one of them have bus drivers needed.
And that's fine, but what I'm saying is now we're offering them a bonus. The bonus should have been done a long time ago. The steps should have been stretched out for the.
I don't know if the bonus is the answer, but I think it's a lack of people, like Brenda said, people not wanting to be bus drivers with all the responsibilities they have with.
So I was going to address this later, but I'll just kind of talk about our short, our short-term, medium, and long-term plans that we know that it's, there's a shortage. We've hit a crisis. Our Transportation Department supervisors, mechanics, and every employee in that department has pulled together and gone above and beyond to keep buses running and kids in school and have done it tremendously. And as you heard tonight, almost to their detriment because they don't want to have a kid miss school. We were at a point where it was becoming a crisis, and I don't use that term lightly, but it was something that we had to take drastic action to make sure that we could be safe with our transportation. And that's where we came to the conclusion with our supervisors that canceling routes was the only choice we had. That is a short-term solution to make sure that we can have supervisors in the office to help run the operation. In the office, they can actually analyze routes, look at strategies we can use to try to mitigate that, whether it's collapsing routes permanently, whatever that midterm solution is to try to free up space and drivers to run routes. We've also been trying to locate vans so that we can bring more vans in and maybe take some special needs routes and break them into vans versus buses. So we have a midpoint solution that we are working on with our Transportation Department. Chris is on the phone with them daily. We're meeting with them weekly to monitor the progress and help try to problem solve that midterm solution. And once we get the midterm solution, then we're starting to look at in November what next year will look like and how do we route so that we can sustain the department with the staff that we have. So we have the short-term solution, which is canceling routes, midterm solutions that are being worked on right now, and then we'll continue to work on a long-term solution for next year once we get through this and can get it something kind of moderated for this situation for now. So we are continuing to work on the solution with those visions of having a long-term solution to the problem.
And Daryl, didn't at one point we had 12 or 15 that were going to be hired, but they fell through the hiring process for background?
We did have, as we started the year, open routes, as they mentioned, and we did have drivers who were in the hiring process. And to be a bus driver, it requires a lot of hoops to jump through, drug test, background check, BMV check, um, and then the CDL with the bus driver endorsement. There are a lot of processes, and any step along the way can stop that to a grinding halt. And multiple drivers that were in the chute had things happen that branded that to a halt. So some that we thought we had coming that would have been relieved did not make it through the process.
How much does a mechanic make an hour in the district? Does anybody know?
The mechanic pay starts at a little over $20 an hour.
Do you know how much a, a, a mechanic gets paid outside of the district if he's working for like a company or something? They get anywhere from 30 to 35 bucks an hour. Why can't we up the wages instead of just having two mechanics there and one of them being a bus driver? Why can't we at least get four in there? I don't understand that. Because then we, if, if we got, if we got four mechanics in there or even five mechanics, do you know that it would be less money to be paid out by the district than to send it to an independent person to fix our buses? It's like $130, and I'm sorry for adjusting it, but this is straight from a supervisor's mouth. $135 an hour to get that bus fixed. Where if we had four or five mechanics, I'm not too good at math. I've got a master's degree in history, but it would make more sense to hire more mechanics and give them more money.
So we, we have posted and looked for mechanics and not have, not found them. Changing the salary schedule would be something that we would negotiate.
Salary range?
And our salary range, when we did a comparison with other districts, we're in the top three of surrounding districts in terms of starting salary for mechanics. It may not be competitive with the private industry, but it is competitive with the school industry.
Well, we need the mechanics.
I agree with you, Joe.
We need the mechanics bad. You can ask anybody here.
We need mechanics bad. We need drivers bad. We need aides. We need aides in the building. We are, I don't disagree with you, Joe. We need people. You haven't voted on it yet, Mark. We need a motion in a second.
We did.
Are you ready, Pam?
So tonight, we have the regular meeting of September 27th minutes, and we also have three then and now invoices from Hamilton County ESC. And with that, I'd like to ask the board to approve the fiscal consent items as listed.
Second. Motion in a second? Any questions? That passes 5 to 0?
Thank you.
We do have two new courses that are on there for information only. These will be for the 2223 school year. It's Advanced Design 1 and 2. They are high school art courses. So the abstracts are on there. If you have questions, let us know. They'll be back at the next meeting for approval so they can be in the course catalog for students to choose for next year.
That brings it to Daryl, your updates.
And I addressed already some of the things around Transportation with the canceling of the routes and our process that we're trying to look at in terms of long-term solutions because as Joe mentioned and Pam reiterated, it is a situation with driver shortage that we're going to have to address that's been brewing for a while that we need to address with a long-term solution. The other piece is, um, we are hiring, so those bonuses, we hope, will attract people to come in and want to, um, fill some of those open positions. That is part of our solution, but not the only solution that we're looking at. We have to address this from multiple angles. The other thing is that we did wrap up our master facility process. We had over 3,000, um, community members, parents, students, alumni, who voted in that survey and gave us their input. That was all processed last night with our community advisory team. And on November 3rd, um, the results of that survey and recommendations um, will be brought to you with kind of a summary of where we are and some recommendations from the committee. They processed all of the input from the survey and are, um, kind of working through that so that we can present some, a new master facility plan for you guys to consider. And that'll be coming to the next board meeting, which will be on Wednesday, November 3rd.
That's it for now. Any questions for Daryl?
Nope.
That brings us to board member comments. Joe?
Yeah, I've, I've got some comments, and it might affect the bus drivers and the funding that goes into Transportation. And this is directed towards the Director of Curriculum and the Treasurer. Amy, how much money is appropriated to create the instructional coaches, AKA data coaches? Do you know? Let me give you, let me give you the figure. $2,292,415.2 cents. I don't know where the 2 cents came from.
That per year or for two?
Per year. So did, was that ESER money?
Yes, that was our ESER plan.
And it went to Hamilton County?
That will be, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And that we had as a work session, and we had our plan, and we worked to.
How many, how many of?
To increase student achievement.
How many data coaches do we have?
There is ones throughout the building.
Do you know, Brenda?
Yes, data coaches, you have one in Northwest. You have two at Corrine High. You have one in each of the middle schools.
Total. So there's, how many total? I'm not good at math again.
Data coaches, you have two at Corrine, one in Northwest, so that's three, and you have one in each middle school. So that's a total of six data coaches. We have lots of different types of coaches.
So we spent $2,200,000 or 200, $2,292,000?
On 22 total coaches.
Okay, so once again, I'm not good at math, but somebody can throw me a figure out there or up here. What I'm telling you is, and I met with, I called a meeting with Daryl and Aaron over at Corrine High School, and they're ready to revolt. They're not very happy with what, what's going on with these data coaches. We spent all this money when we could have appropriated the money towards Transportation or some other program, but we put all our eggs in one basket. And I will tell you, and I'm just going to summarize here, the phrases from some of the irate teachers. "You will not talk to me that way." That was said to one of the data coaches when this guy asked him to meet him after, after school with the one-on-one. We're talking about a veteran teacher here who was offended by the abrasive questions and proposals that this data coach was making. And how many, how many of these people have been called out on the rug by their, the administrator of that building?
So Joe, as happened when we met with Aaron Davis and talked about this, if something is not known, it cannot be addressed. And we are encouraging, if there is a situation where someone feels that they were not treated appropriately, they go to their building administrator so that it can be addressed. The coaches are a level of support that we have brought into the district as part of the ESER plan that was presented to you in the spring around how we would address student achievement, increase student achievement by increasing support for our teachers.
Well, all I can say is when I was at Walnut Hills for 15 million years, the things that worked for me were I taught the curriculum that I developed, and I kept order. And we're talking about seniors here. And guess, guess what? It worked. So now all of a sudden, you've got teachers that are coming back after two years with all kinds of chaotic situations with remote teaching and teaching to the kids who are present in the building. And they, then they got to rearrange their whole teaching style. And all of a sudden now, they're being bombarded by these data coaches, which is costing us once again. You know what the price tag on that was? Some of the irate teacher quotes, when this, this guy had this, this conference after school. I don't know what the circumstances are, but I can quote him because. school, I don't know what the circumstances are, but I can quote him because he sent it to me. "You will not talk to me that way." He got up, walked out of his classroom, walked out of the building, and went home because it was after school. Another quote was this, not relevant, "What is the purpose of this expletive deleted people who come into our building telling us how to teach?" The bottom line is this, I'm all for getting rid of bad teachers. I mean, everybody in this room who has kids in our district, you know, they probably know who the bad teachers are. All I'm saying is, those bad teachers can be handled by the head administrator of that building and his assistants because they know that person's bad to begin with. And we talked about that with Erin. She knows who the bad teachers are. But why are they using data coaches to go after or try to tell these other people how to teach when they're doing their job? They're teaching the curriculum and they're keeping order. But we've got these other people coming in there for two-point-two million dollars plus, and all of a sudden, now you've got a revolt on your hands. And I'm telling you, it's coming, whether it's going to be, you know, teacher sick time, or they're calling sick, or whatever. They're really angry. And it's not only happening at that high school, it's happening at the other high school, too. We just don't need the, this money being spent for something that is useless. Thank you, that's it.
When we met with Erin, this was new news to Erin. She had no idea about someone walking out on a meeting. So we are encouraging people to go to their administrator if something like that has happened because our administrators can't fix what they don't know.
And we, and we, we propose an open-door policy for Erin.
Erin already has one.
Okay.
As do all of our administrators. They're very accessible to their staff.
Anything else, Jim?
No.
And that vote for, for that position from the board was a five-o vote? So Joe, you approved that?
I understand that, but I didn't know what was going, what the result of this was going to be. And the result is, we got some problems.
Sure. And I, I mean, who can predict that until it happens and then you have to handle it?
Yeah, I mean, how can you predict? It's here.
Do you know what I mean?
It's here.
Jim?
I just wanted, is this the only incident with this particular person?
No.
That we've seen so far?
We don't know who the person is.
That's been reported to the administrator, the principal?
It's a new model, and so our administrators have been working with the coaches. Erin meets with her coaches every Friday, and they debrief about how it's going. They are working on developing the coaching plans so that it is a level of support. It is professional collaboration. It is not someone telling someone what to do or how to do it, but problem solving and collaborating to make sure that our teachers have the support they need. Because as Joe mentioned, this is a hard year. It's different than it's ever been. We have kids in the building. Last year, we had, you know, half of our kids remote, half in person. We now have buildings that are full of kids who may not have been in a classroom for over a year. And it is different, and it is difficult, and we are going through a situation where our staff is trying to support immense needs academically and socially, emotionally from the kids in front of them. And we are trying to layer in support to make sure that they have the support they need to make sure that they can have the most successful year. And it is a work in progress.
And Joe's working through the same thing, Everett, Northwest?
All of our administrators have coaching in their building.
Okay.
And they are all working as a team to make sure that they develop that coaching plan that is a layer, layer and level of support.
Got you. I just wanted to thank the speakers. Brenda, you did a fabulous job. I, I hear what you're saying. I get it. You know, like Pam said, it, it's everywhere, and we just need to do maybe a better job getting more bus dri, I think, you know, I don't know, I see every business out there that you have signs, you go buy whatever business it is, help needed, sign-on bonuses. It, it's continuing. And I just, I, I don't know what the answer is. I guess we just have to, you know, get the word out there and try and get more, you know, people to apply.
True.
You know, like you said, we had twelve people in the, in the hopper at the beginning of the school year, and for what, for one reason or another, they didn't qualify to be a bus driver. There's a, like you said, there's a lot of hoops you have to drop, jump through to become a bus driver. And, you know, it's just something, we just, we've got to get a handle on this. Somebody's got to help us, someone's got to do something, you know, to get this rectified.
It's not just new hires, it's also retention.
Right. No, no, I, I get, I get what you're saying. I, I get it.
Did you, Jim? Because we've got negotiations all summer long, and it didn't seem like you got it.
I, I got it. I sat there and listened to everything. So, yeah, other than that, I'm good.
Pam?
First, I want to thank the three thousand-plus people that took the time to do the master facility survey. I think that's a phenomenal number. And I'm excited and anxious to see the results. That's a lot of people that have put input, and that's important because the facilities are going to be here, there, long after many of us are gone. So I think that's very important. As far as, I mean, this whole topic, the ESSER funds, in one way, I think, have been, have helped school districts a lot, and another way, I think they're very misunderstood. It's easy to throw out these numbers at two million dollars and one million dollars and two cents to all of us. That's a lot of money. There's a lot of strings attached to all those ESSER funds, and I think it was very much explained to the board that those ESSER funds was a one-time deal for a two-year thing. So the worst thing we could do is take that ESSER money and hire a bunch of new people, and then in two years, oops, we don't have the money. Because we all know we're not getting it from the state, and we're not getting it from the federal government because somehow, education in this country just is not a priority to politicians. To someone that has worked on every levy since I was a kid here and graduated in nineteen seventy-nine, I'm telling you, I've worked our butts off to try to explain to the community why we need the funds for this school. We shouldn't, we, we should be able to pay our, our mechanics. The other thing we're forgetting, our teachers are always almost at the bottom of the pay. We can, every time we seem to maybe creep up to the bottom third, then something happens and all of them get raises, all the other districts, and we're back down again. So it's not just, you know, I heard a comment that we don't care about transportation. Are you crazy? That is the, I mean, to, I, when I put my kids on the bus, I, I trusted the bus driver to get my kids there safely. Absolutely, it is important. But trying to find more money, it's, there's not just this huge pot of money. And unfortunately, we have to figure out how to do it all the way around and to look a teacher in the eye and say, sorry, you're only worth the bottom of the barrel, the lowest or the second-lowest school district in Hamilton County. That's where we've been at. That's, that's what we're up against. When we were able to raise that pay a little bit, and granted, I realize it wasn't a lot, but the fact we came in here and bumped up that subpay to try to get drivers in, that was an attempt. Is it a solution? No, but it was an attempt to try to do something. These bonuses, I hope this, something too. But to say that there's only been a shortage since last April is ridiculous. We've been talking about bus driver shortages for years. And to say that we're spending two million dollars on six coaches is absolutely ridiculous, too. And this board, these five of us, we sat here and we had a work session. And what a work session is, is to have dialogue back and forth, and we had opportunity to ask questions about ESSER funds. We had opportunity to throw any of this stuff up. And to all of a sudden now act like we didn't know what we were voting on, as Mark just said, it was a five-o vote. We voted because we're in the business to educate children. And we get sandblasted, too, because of where we are on the state report card and so on and so forth. So every piece of the puzzle, we have to figure out. It all takes money. I mean, we're waiting on Dewine. I mean, the city of Cincinnati was trying, or, and I might have this wrong, one of the school districts was trying to use the National Guard to come in and help with bus drivers. So don't think it's only here. This whole nation is in trouble not having enough bus drivers and mechanics. My hope is, one positive thing is our partnership with Butler Tech that, I mean, I think we have over half of our high school students that have been enrolled in one way or another in a Butler Tech program. There's diesel mechanic programs. My hope is that we still have kids that are going to go into this. Because, yeah, someday, all of you out there are going to retire, and we got to hope that we have kids that are going into this and, and want to earn a CDL, and, and so that they'll be taking over these jobs. So this is not easy at all, but it, it's short of, if you're having a big pot of money and then giving everybody at the top of the pay, absolutely. I mean, I'm always working to try to get extra money in this district. I've worked every, every election day. I stand out there, especially on levies, for thirteen hours and get blasted by people who don't want their taxes going up. And they don't understand this picture of how important and the need, when it all comes down to, sad to say, is money. And we got to take that pot of money, and we got to figure out how we can get the kids to school, and then what can we do to educate these kids? And then low and behold, a pandemic comes along that none of us have ever experienced. We've got kids at home, and now they're so far behind, and now that's all on these teachers. Now these teachers not only have to teach, they have to teach last year, too, to get them up to speed. So, okay, the government did come up with these ESSER funds, so we're trying these different things with these dat, data coaches and different strategy, strategies to try to get our kids up to speed. Will some of it not work? Sure, it won't work. Will some of it be successful? I certainly hope so. But we can't just say that we're ignoring this side to help this side. We're trying to do the best we can here. So I, I just, as a board member, you have to take responsibility. If you vote for something, you better damn well know what you voted for. And we all voted for the ESSER funds to be spent the way they are. So it's not a magical ban, it's not a magical, these funds aren't going to make everything all better. We're just hoping it helps each piece a little bit.
I voted for the, the appropriation for the data coaches, but I didn't know that this was going to be a disaster that's happening in the high schools. I didn't foresee that. I don't think anybody did. But I did vote for it. So, you know?
I guess I would just...
If you want to call me guilty of it, that's fine.
I would just, I, I guess, encourage that if people are having issues and there are teachers that are frustrated, if they don't speak up and let their superior know, then how are you supposed to fix it? If your kids are...
Because we're, we've been under this cloud since the last regime has gone by that people are not going to speak up.
Well, then, you can't fix something that you don't know what's broken.
They're scared. They're scared of, of coming forward and speaking up.
I'm done. Thanks, Pam. Matt?
All right. Well, thank you, Pam, for everything you said. I, I'd just like to add that I do appreciate you, you drivers and what you do, and I am thankful for the extra work that you guys, you all have put forth to cover routes, to, what is it, double up, you know, split, split routes, whatever all the terminology is. And, you know, I realize it, you know, takes extra work to, you know, accomplish that, to, you know, get our kids to and from school. And it, it, it makes me ill to think that we have to cancel routes, that we are to a point that, you know, we're unable to get kids to and from school, and that puts that on to the parents to, you know, get them to school. And if the parents aren't able to, then they're not in school. And that's one of the things, you know, the board, you know, puts an emphasis on is that, you know, kids are in school learning. And that's a, our primary function of our district is to teach and educate children. So hopefully, the administration, you know, hears your concerns in particular. I mean, there's, you know, some of the things that seems easy to me to rectify that, you know, Brenda mentioned, you know, just the little things like sprayers that aren't working. That seems like something that, you know, definitely is within our purview and that we can fix. And, you know, discipline issues that are on your buses that, you know, we can attempt to do better, to support you in that. And so, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Pam. First, I want to congratulate all the student achievement folks as, in the process of trying to keep kids is our primary focus. I think we need to acknowledge the kids who receive the awards that they receive. Clearly, this stuff is incredibly complicated, it's very emotional. I just want to challenge each other that we show grace toward each other. A lot of, a lot of times, we collectively as a board don't hear all the minute details behind things. So we appreciate when you come and speak and share your opinion. You know, I, I can remember, I sent an email to all the staff a few years ago after the Florida shooting. Because I, I realized at that point, I send my kid to school, they get on their bus, they go to their classroom, and I have friends that are educators in this, in this district that would take a bullet for my child. And we take that for granted. We take for granted that our kids get on the bus, and I, I believe I heard one time that so many millions of miles that the buses drive every year. We take for granted that you guys do that safely. This problem that we're having with hiring, you, you can make it White Castles right now, twenty dollars an hour. White Castles. This is not a new problem. Well, this, I mean, this is a new problem. So the world is trying to adjust, our country is trying to adjust to this employment shortage. And I would imagine, for some people, I can't imagine being captured on a bus with kids and only making X amount of dollars. I, I imagine that would be incredibly stressful for people who, that isn't their cup of tea. But you guys see it as you have opportunity to influence children while you have them. And that's, that's kind of the miracle behind it. But the, the thing that I want to challenge everybody to is that we respect each other. If you have issues, bring them forward. I know the five of us will listen. We'll do what we can do, and we'll try to piece all this together for everybody. And I guess that's about it, because everything else has been kind of said and read into it. So at this point, we need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So you have an executive session?
No. Oh, this isn't to exec, oh, this, sorry. We have an executive session.
The board will approve a motion to move into executive session to consider the employment of a public employee or official and to conference with an attorney concerning disputes that are subject to pending or imminent court action. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the motion to move into executive session as listed.
Second. Motion in a second. We'll go into executive session. We'll return at the end of it, but there'll be no action items taken after that. The only thing we will do is adjourn the meeting once we return from executive session.